IPM. Stephanie's on route, but she's not here yet. So I'll call the attendance. Joe. John, I'm here. Vicky. Stephanie's not here. Angela. Alex.
Here.
Justin, Jen, Jane, Pete, Mary. Everyone here is Stephanie and she's probably, I understand she's on route. So. Okay, um. We'll move on to the budget workshop. This will be the shortest meeting we've ever had. It'll be, we'll be here all night. I'm not sure which. At this point, the question is, does anyone have any questions, any reaction to the public hearing? Anything else that we want to discuss? Because the goal tonight is to leave here with a budget that we will vote to approve at our next meeting. We don't want to make changes after tonight because we're going to meet. Lori and Nicole are going to meet with the boards of finance Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday night this week. Or I'm sorry, tonight you had the first one tonight, but, but you're going to have, you're going to have the next two nights are going to be with other boards fighting itself. We want to try to get this budget finalized. Now I'll leave the floor open. Alex.
At the last meeting, I acknowledge that there were five people that spoke on, on behalf of the agri-science program. After the meeting, it was explained to me. The reality, the numbers they used were just sort of out of thin air. Actually, the budget for the agri-science is going up this year. But the more important thing is the class size. We have classes eight, six, and we have one class of one. My immediate reaction to that was. And let me get this straight. There are four equestrian programs, right? Classes. Or the one that's the one person, equine. Why couldn't that single student be put in one of the other three? Well, they got to work the schedule out.
So we've already talked about other, what other high schools do if they have a unique program like that. And there's one, and this isn't obviously, it's not just agri-science. It's a lot of different kinds of programs. We've looked at having the teacher agree to work with them as a one-to-one. So it's not a class because you're pulling a teacher out for one student. Think about what, what's happening with that. So they've done independent studies with students. And that's what I've told them to look into if we ever get low numbers again. Because it really to pull one teacher, you know, out of a class, you could have another class of fifteen, twenty, whatever. Is difficult. We do, once you're done, Alex, I do want to tell you that we do have some slides because I do want to, both Nicole and I want to clarify some of the concerns that came up around numbers.
Yeah. Well, let me just one quick question. This teacher that teaches the one student also teaches three other classes, correct? Four other classes. Okay. So this is a dedicated teacher that all this one person is doing is one kid.
No, no.
But I still think, you know.
But every other, but if you think of the other teachers, they have five classes and they're all filled or higher than one.
I got it. Okay. Yeah. Why don't you go ahead and do your slideshow?
So we had discussed this a couple of times in the meetings and I know that the, and I don't remember his last name, the guy who's the head of the state for agri-science Harold, I think something. There is no reason that we can't open those classes up to kids from Chapag who are not agri-science kids. That would help to fill the class. It would help to bring these kids together because all we talk about is, well, they, they ag kids don't feel like they're really part of Chapag. You know, they take math together. They take English together, but you don't get to talk in math and English. You do get to talk in cooking class and plant class and equine class. So we need to open these classes up to everybody. And then you won't have one kid in a class. Maybe you'll have eight or 10 kids in a class and everybody benefits.
We went to a meeting and we raised this exact question and we were, and, and we were told that absolutely not, we weren't allowed to. And then you were, Dr. Rodriguez came on and said, I've spoken to someone in the head department and they said, we absolutely can. What happened with that? Because after that meeting, I never heard another question about that. And did you, so did you give them supporting documentation or whatever? So if you could just elaborate on that.
I will. So after that meeting, I had a meeting with the advisory committee. And again, held firm that we had heard Nicole had had a meeting, heard both in person and through via a response email. And then interestingly enough, I believe it was John Shells, the principal of the high school and Tyler were at a meeting. And they were doing a visit, just like they came to, you know, look at our program. They went on a visit to Wamago and that same, and Harold Macken was there. So they even questioned because they're doing the same thing. They're opening up classes, just seats, open seats. The, the, what you, what you have to understand though, is if you had a class of one, you can't fill it with fourteen other non-ag science. That, that would not work. We'd have to look at seats where the majority of students in, in each of those classrooms are agri-science students. That's number one. So it can't be, well, we didn't fill it. There was only one. So we're going to put all non-ag. We cannot do that. However, Wamago even was saying at that meeting, and I'm only quoting what I'm hearing from the principal, Don and Tyler, who were there. They asked the question and said, you know, we're only opening up seats when we have them. And the state doesn't reimburse for that. So it isn't anything we have to worry about. You know, not getting funding from them. We just can't have a, ever have a non-ag science teacher using space. We already know that. And that was answered in, in a question to Nicole. So I brought it up to the advisory committee. He had quoted another something from the law, but I feel very confident that we can continue to do that as long as we don't cross the line and, and put too many in a certain, and I have to tell you, once I show you that I'm with you, it will be a seat here and there. And that's all we're looking to do. So I'm glad you asked that question.
Okay. John.
I'll add to that too. In the lead up to ag. This was a hot topic, whether or not our core curriculum mainstream students could attend ag classes as an elective. And everyone said absolutely yes. I, that was a good point though. The majority has to be ag students. So, but you know, it coordinates with the science departments. It coordinates with the math departments. Students get to take shop classes, which, you know, I mean, yeah, it has to be.
So I will tell you, we've already talked to Sophia Velez. So she knows that if there are seats, so the counselors will be monitoring where there might be an open seat here and there all year and, you know, hopefully, you know, in the future. And that will just be part of the culture, hopefully.
With all due fairness to the ag advisory committee, I do believe by recollection originally, which was the state was that you could not afford these seats. Now that, that goes way back. I mean, it goes back years. That there was, there was a discussion of that. And I think that, that, that a number of people prevailed upon Mr. Mack and he real, and got him to understand that these were situations in which you had seats that otherwise wouldn't be occupied and was an opportunity to expand the reach of the program. But I think, but originally that, that was the position of the state. I remember having that discussion up in, in Parkville.
Wait.
Oh, you brought up one point. I wanted to.
Right. John's right about that. Originally we sold on the fact that our kids would, our kids would also be able to fill those seats. John's right about that.
Well, and there, there is one thing that when I met with the advisory committee and he produced a document and I think even Harold Macken mentioned this, and he's mentioned this before. I think he was talking to Wamago because they were doing exactly what we want to do already. And one of the things is that they were really pushing on, well, you can open up the seats, but then students have to, you know, be able to do the S E, the S E T. Thank you. Sorry. It's late. The S A E hours in the program or attend the F F A meetings. And I said, wait a minute. That's just being that, then what you're asking them to be is a pseudo-agri-science student. Why would anyone do that when they, they just, right? They just want to take an elective. So what I said to, I think I have it figured out. I said to Tyler and he agreed. Look, we can, we can open that up to those students who are going to fill seats as an invitation. And many of them can actually do something in terms of community service hours here and exchange it if they want to do the S A E hours there. And he thought that was a great idea. I said, there's always a creative option, alternative. So that's what I said we're going to do. Thought of that. Sorry.
Okay. You want to show your charts and graphs?
Yeah. So just a few, and I thought would would clarify and thanks to Nicole who kind of put the numbers in too. So we hope you can see that. We just wanted you to see that there are five full pathways. We talked about that at the last meeting. We moved from four because they split the animals. But there was a comment made in, in during the public comment or someone about no plant science being taught. Did you hear something like that? Well, that's not at all true. There are plant science courses being taught in the agri-science academy. I'm not really sure where that, you know, where that came from, but we wanted you to see what's being taught. The twenty-three, twenty-four cooperates. Okay. So animals, equine, food science. That's okay. Plant science and power systems. So if you move to the next one, the next slide, Ben. Here are the numbers. I had Sophia put in the incoming freshmen and student requests. So you see, they do fill out a bit next year, which is great because we have low numbers. You still see a class of two in equine. You see some classes of eight, a class of ten, eleven, nine, fifteen, which is well, now remember, this is the sixty anticipated. I will tell you, you will have lower numbers, just like we did. Sixty were anticipated last year. We ended up with forty-two. So, and people move and kids, right? There's all reasons why. So these are good numbers right here. I'm looking at a really good, I think, for all the, for all the classrooms and for all the pathways, these are good. So, but you know, hopefully we have some room in some, in some areas to put kids, but just so you know why we made the decision, it wasn't out of thin air. What would we do if you put a fifth teacher in right now? And suck those numbers for five classes, those would all go down. Right? Am I right?
By, you know, by twenty percent.
Exactly.
Yeah. Lori, I have a question for you. And this has been really a concern of mine for, for quite some time. Why is there such a disconnect between what the advisory committee is saying versus what our agri-science department is saying? And it, it's very concerning to me because it's not matching. And ultimately, this is about the children. This is about the students. And I'm not understanding why there is such a disconnect and why there is such a difference in numbers and opinions and different things like that. So I just wanted to make that public statement saying that it's very concerning to me. And I'm just wondering why there's such a disconnect.
I wish I had a good answer for that. I wasn't here when the committee was started. I don't know where the information is coming through, even to be honest, I had a, a, a long chat with Tyler and said, even the, the lists of things that he's been given, you know, on and on about things that weren't fixed or things that need to be improved. I'm not sure where that comes from, even when you look at the whole advisory committee. Cause that's a, that's a whole group that has to talk about those various issues, correct? It's not just a smaller executive board or a spinoff of that. So I think with the oversight of the hopefully new committee from the Board of Education and are working with them because I've already had a meeting and said, look, we just want to work together and coordinate all of this and to make sure you know everything, you know, that, that can help. You make the recommendations for us. We want to be, you know, we want to work in partnership with you and that's it. That's so I can't answer that because I don't really know where that miscommunication is. I haven't really put a finger on that yet.
My feeling is that there could be a, a, a faction of it, the fact that we're talking about farmers and we're talking about educators. And they have two different motivations. Our job is not to be farmers. Our job is to be teachers and teach kids how to farm. And that may be different than the advisory group of how they see the world. Because they see it maybe in dollars and cents, you know, how much can I make off of this crop? We, we're not trying to make money off our, well, I mean, it would be nice to make money off the floral, et cetera. But that's not our primary motivation. We're teachers, not, not farm.
Yeah. But well, one thing, the early days of this program, when this program started, the first couple of years we had it, it was not really functioning at the, at a high level. And for example, you know, we had, we, we, we weren't producing, the greenhouse was, had nothing growing in for a year, almost nothing growing for over a year. I mean, it was two years. We're still looking at very little in there. There were other things in the program that were not moving with alacrity. I mean, it was, it was our trying to get started with something that was something we had never done before. Okay. So it wasn't anyone's fault. It wasn't anyone's lack of doing things, but it was, it was not moving at a, at a pace that I think that the local people felt was appropriate for it. And I think that to some extent that was that. Now, things have changed since then dramatically. And I don't know whether this things have to catch up. That, that's all I'm suggesting. I, I don't think that there's a a fundamental difference, but I do believe that there needs to be communication. There needs to be people talking. And they need to be understanding what each other is saying. And I think that's, that's the critical element of it because if we're going to get the best out of this advisory group, we, we need, we need to have them understanding what the program is that we're running and we need to have them having their input on those items.
So my sense, this is just my feeling about the, the situation is I feel that there's a sense of ownership. And I think that the, it gets really gray quick. And I think that there's a huge sense of ownership with the people who serve on the advisory board because they feel invested. And I understand that. I think that we all feel invested as community members. I think, you know, we feel that way as we're involved in different, in different committees, whether that be the PTOs or the, whatever it may be, we're all really invested. I do feel that there seems to be a fine line between the ownership. And I think that somehow the gray area for me personally is that the advisory board seems to think that they have a lot more say and they don't seem to respect the administration's findings in terms of how the program is run. And that to me is where I get a little worried. I think that, you know, finding a balance between respecting the boundaries of what the administration does, and then also finding the role of what the the committee does, and then find a meeting in the middle and compromising. I think that there's a sense of, and I don't know. And I think to Greg's point, I think in the beginning, because there wasn't a lot of definition. I think that there, they, the committee had a sense of caring, maybe a little bit more weight in, in, in it because there wasn't a huge direction. But we are, we are okay in that department. So we really need to allow the administration and the teachers to do their job. And then we as the investing part of the committee and the, and community need to let them do their job and then find a way how we can support them in the process. And I think that that is where the gray line needs to be a lot more defined.
All right, John.
Jen put it too politely. I think, you know, I sensed the other night, the other night I sensed some hostility between the committee. Hopefully the new alignment will bring more understanding. They implied that the board doesn't take ag seriously. So. Yeah, it was stated.
Which for the record, I actually find insulting because for me, I had to have been invested in the, in, in this program when, when it was a wee baby seed. And fought really hard, fought really hard, John, to make sure that this program happened here. So to imply that somehow we aren't invested was really insulting because I want nothing more than to see not only the, the program thrive, but I have, I mean, to see the students when they come up here and they, and they present, I, I get teary eyed. They're just so remarkable and it's so encouraging. But I do find that we have to, as a board, make sure that we give the support to the adminis, the administration to do their job. And then everybody find their role and how to support that.
Final note, it's an advisory board, advisory being the operative word. I think it would be great for them to come in with ideas and we cherry pick the ones that we think are valid. And they don't get everything they want. They're advisory and they're not the board. They're an advisory.
I can tell you, I also told Tyler that what I would like to see, because I, I keep hearing of the not so positive aspects of what we're not doing or what we need to get to, right? I don't think I'm alone in hearing that. And that, I did address that with the advisory committee, all well intentioned, but I wanted them to know that. That's, that, that's, you know, concerning. So I said to Tyler, I really, if you look at where it was, as you mentioned, and where it is today, it's, it's light years from, from that very first, right moment of inception. And a lot of that is due to Tyler and the staff and every, everyone who's invested. So I said, I really think it's a lack of community. I need you to really start communicating all the wonderful things out there. And I get, you know, I don't mean the occasional newsletter. I really think that a lot of it is parents need to hear what wonderful things are happening. The, the state of the art equipment we have that is being used. There's so much that I'm not sure is getting through somehow. And that will offset, you know, anyone who feels like maybe they're, you know, we're not doing what we should be doing. We are. I will tell you, I think I've already said this, all the luncheons I'm having with the high school students, many of whom are ag. They are mentioning how much they love it. So you wouldn't hear that if it were this program that was not doing well. So I just thought I'd mention that, but I do have more slides when you're done.
Yeah, I promise.
Yeah.
I promise I'll be quick because I don't want, and I know Jane has something to say. But I also just wanted to comment on the other part, and I think this was something that we discussed at the meeting that Vicky was at and Mary and Lori was that my understanding of the committee is their part, part of their job is communication. Communication throughout the community about what the program is doing. And, and my feeling is, is that even when things aren't going a certain way, it is the advisory board to still talk positively about the program out in the public. So my feeling is, is it's sort of like, you know, you don't go out and air your dirty laundry. You go out and you smile and you talk about all the wonderful things. And then when you've got issues, you come in and you discuss them in-house. And so for me, I feel a very strong part of that community, that committee needs to be very mindful about how they do speak in the community because if they can't speak positively, they should not be on the committee.
Jane.
I'm just wondering, you know, if we could get this advisory board to go to one of his presentations. Because he does a really good job of making people focus on what's important.
Jane, I'm sorry. Mary, did you have something?
Yeah. The group that was here that spoke the other night, there were two people that weren't, it had no intention of talking when they came here. They just came to listen. And then they ended up speaking. The people that should know better, the head of the advisory committee is making it sound like we are putting forty-five children in one classroom. And that's what we're doing. That's what he made it sound like. And another person that was there was, that was, that always speaks, it always comes to all those advisory meetings. She also made it sound like we were going to stick forty-five children in a classroom and that's what we were going to do. When that was, there was nothing further from the truth. And and it just, it's very frustrating at the advisory committee that the three of us were at.
Well.
It was very, it was, there was a lot of negative stuff that came out.
There was, but I, I think that was a gross misapprehension. Because what they were focused on were that they were dividing the number of students by the number of teachers. When they should have been dividing the number of students by the number of, of, of classes.
Right.
Because each teacher has five. So instead of dividing, instead of dividing a hundred and eighty by four and, and coming up with forty-five kids in a class, they should have been dividing it by twenty. And they come up with nine kids on a class. And that was a misapprehension.
Right.
I think they, I think that they, perhaps they weren't, I, I don't know whether they were fully aware of the teaching load or how it worked or what have you. But apparently they weren't, and it was a misapprehension. I think it was a deliberate attempt to try to sow anything.
I'm not so sure of that.
I think, I think it fit into a narrative of criticism, but I think, I don't think it was, I don't think it was an attempt to mislead. I just think it was, they were wrong. But, but the other thing I, I want to point out is, is that you, you understand that these people are people in agriculture, they're in the farming industry. They're, they're people that have to, that have to deal with, with, with issues and concerns and things straight up. I, I don't think that that's necessarily trains everyone to communicate in a, in a, in the kind of sunny way that we're looking for. Because I just don't think that's the nature of the business that they're in. They're in a tough business. It's a very hard business. And what they, what they want to see, I am certain, they want to see our kids be successful in these businesses. And you're not successful if you don't work awfully hard. And I think that they have perhaps there, there's a, there's a misapprehension of what's reasonably possible in the school environment because we have, we, we, we're not just trying to, to, to farm something. We're not just trying to do something. We're also trying to, we have to educate. We have to comply with bureaucratic rules. We have a whole raft of things that we have to do that are not necessarily fitting in. This isn't a farm. Okay. It's an institution. And when you have, when you're an institution, you, you approach things differently. And I think there's a little bit of a, 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 of a, there needs to be more communication. So they understand how we have to do things and we understand what they're telling us in terms of how things are done in the business of ag. I think it's important that those things get expressed, but I think that rather than go off in this, you know, I mean, they, they came in there. There was, there was a lot of hostility last meeting and I, I wasn't happy with that. But on the other hand, I think that we need to move forward and not go backward and say, well, that hostility, we can't have a conversation. We need to have more conversations.
I don't think anyone is saying anything like that, Greg, but I, what I do want to raise a, you know, awareness to is the fact that we are spending a lot of time speaking about our agri-science program every meeting that we have. And it seems we have the agri-science program, we have the advisory board, and we are spending a lot of time on this. And there seems to be an issue that needs to be addressed and it needs to be addressed yesterday.
There, there, there is, and it is being addressed. And there have been conversations. The superintendent has been in close contact with all these people. We're trying to work this out. It, it will get worked out. Let's, let's be patient. But I don't think, I, I guess the question is, it, it seems to me with the current load of students and teachers, that it doesn't make any sense for us to hire a fourth teacher, a fifth teacher.
No.
A fifth teacher at this point, unless anyone, does, does anyone disagree with that?
No, but the, the.
No, I'm just trying, I'm trying to get to the, because we're here to talk about the budget, not about the ag science program or the relationship. I understand it's part of the budget, but the question is not are we having a good time with the, with the advisory committee? The question is, do we need a fifth teacher? Because that's what they presented. They thought we needed a fifth teacher.
Right.
I don't, from the numbers the superintendent has pointed up, I don't see that we do need a good teacher, but I'd love to know if anyone disagrees.
And they're also trying to tell Tyler how to do his job. And that's not right either.
Can we step off of that? We're not here to talk about that. We're here to talk about the budget. I want to stay on the topic. Okay, John?
I want, I want to bring it. I want, I want to bring it back to the budget. Our promise to the community when the ag was started was to break even. We aren't doing that yet. So they, they were all in the audience at that time as well. So they have to understand. You know, we've got to balance it and it takes time. You're right.
Yeah, John, and we've made that clear. I think you're right about that because obviously the. All things being equal, um, you, you wouldn't be hiring a fifth teacher based on the numbers, but even if we were, we have to be cognizant of the cost. And, and, and the, and, and the, when we bring on that fifth teacher, it needs to be in the context of, of, of something that's paid for by the tuition into the program. Or at least we're moving closely to that. If we're not, maybe, maybe we're not a hundred percent there, but we're ninety-five percent. You know, we're almost there, uh, I think is where we have to be. Uh, that, that's our goal. Our goal is not to operate this program. Um, by, by educating. People at, at a, at a, at a net cost. I mean, that wasn't the business model. And I agree with John on that. Okay. So the question is. Is there any, if, if, if there's, if, if no one is going to propose that we hire? Yeah. Yeah.
So when John says you have to come with the way we have. I understand that. I think we can think inside of it. That we have this valuable resource and it's going to waste. We have a dog grooming facility that is not used. So initially I said, well, you know, we could, we could have the kids groom dogs and they said, no, no, that's a liability. I agree with that. That's a liability. But what you could do is a night like tonight. It costs a hundred and what, fifty, a hundred and twenty dollars to get your dog groomed. You, people in the community, bring your dog in and for seventy-five or a hundred dollars, we have a person in the community who is a dog groomer. Who will volunteer their time. Now you have twenty people from the community seeing our beautiful facility. They are paying money that will go into the ad budget.
It doesn't work because the state will not allow, it, it'd be one thing if we had students doing it. Or a teacher instructing students in doing it. But if we bring in an outside groomer into our facility to take care of the dogs of people in the community, the state's going to say, guys.
No, no, they're doing it themselves. No, 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 no. It's, how is it any different than when? Last year you could come in and you could make coleslaw or you could make cabbage. It's like an adult ed. And then why can't the students say, listen, we're not running a full-service wedding business, but guess what? On the weekends, we need SAE, or well, we need SAE hours, or we're trying to run a business, learn how to run an ag business. If you have a small shower going on, a baby shower, a wedding shower, and you need twenty or twenty-five or thirty floral arrangements. We can do that. The students have to price it out. They have to price out the supplies. They have to make a good product. They have to be able to deliver the product. And then again, they get the, the money, but they get the benefit. And then the community goes, wow. Hey, I got my flowers from Shapag. Why don't you just go up to Shapag Agri-science? We have this great facility that we're just wasting.
No, but, but that, that's different when, when the, when the ag students are involved in the process of either creating the plants. Or selling the plants or being involved in the process of doing the plants. That's ag science. It's just not ag science to bring in an outside person and deal with outside.
How is that not? How is that not? So my kids are coming here. The first three days in April to get their, their boating license certificate. So maybe we just use the ag facility. And the money goes to ag, but we're bringing in that outside groomer. We've got a gorgeous facility going.
I understand, but I don't think the state would be good with that. I'm pretty, I'm pretty certain the state would not allow.
I will just say that I was at the ag science uh, classroom last week, this past week, because I was one of the judges for the, for them doing the creeds, which honestly was such a, it was such a thrill. And they were, they were doing a dog grooming with um, one of the student's dogs who I fell in love with and wanted to. So there was a dog running around the classroom and I was super excited with that. So.
So we are actually using the facility. Perhaps we're not using it up to capacity.
But I think Angela, Angela's point, I think she's right. And so I was really encouraged to see a student's dog was there for the day. Um, and they were grooming the dog who looked really nice and clean and fluffy, but um, I think that, I think your point is a hundred percent.
Well, that, that, that actually was the way it was originally pitched to us is that the students would be bringing in their own dogs to groom. And that's the way it would work, but there also there's the adult ed piece. Where theoretically these students would be dealing with community members and community dogs coming in to be groomed. Uh, that, that's, that can be done too as the adult ed piece. But it's got to involve the students and the program. That's what's critical. And if it doesn't, then why are we here? And the teachers. And the.
And I think that that, to, to your point, Greg, I mean, I think that that's an answer for really more Lori to answer, a, a question for Lori to answer. In terms of what that looks like. Cause I, I know what you're saying, but I'd like to hear it from the superintendent.
I'd be too.
So it would have to include, it's a great idea. It would have to, we, it would have to include an agri-science teacher and kids. And it, that's part of it because that's the same thing as a teacher using the space who's a, a non-ag teacher, which is not allowed. So we just have to make sure that those components are there and it would satisfy. Absolutely.
They actually did have a, an adult session on how to trim your dog's nails. That was early on. That's at least two years ago that that was run. And I have been, I, I have been asking for that to be repeated many times because I missed it and would really like to go. Um, but apparently um, that's not been given any um, attention.
Lori, if, if we did something like that, we asked, we had agri-science teachers here to do extra work. How does that work with contracts?
Mary, just to clarify, your question is with respect to having teachers do the extra hours. So our agri-science teachers are one point two FTE. So they're already compensated beyond the regular square bag.
Thank you. Okay, um. Anything else on the ag science? We're, we, so I, I take the consensus to be. That we're not gonna, we're not going to suggest the administration hire a fifth teacher. So is there anything else about the, about the budget that we should, that we should talk about? Are there any other concerns besides this? John, you've been. Oh, come on, yeah. What did you do with the real? All right. Well, I, I, and the reason I'm asking and the reason I want to ask yet again is, is I want to make sure that when, when we go out to the remaining boards of finance. And when, and when we come here next week to approve this budget, that we're approving the budget that's in front of us. We're not making further changes. I really want to avoid that. That really rattled all three camps, although they, they haven't said anything. Now, I, I've, I've spoken to all three first selectmen. And they are very supportive of the budget and, and feel reasonably good about it. And I'm sure Patrick is a little bit queasy because they're getting hit pretty hard. But I will tell you that they're all prepared to support it. They understand it. They understand our, the parameters we work in. They understand that a lot of the budget, almost all of it. All but maybe seven or eight percent was a little bit out of our control because it's things that have been preordained by the labor contracts and. And, and the cost of uh, of, of fuel and, and transportation and those kind of things. Uh, and they're very attuned to that. And they believe that we have, I believe, they believe that we have kept uh, the budget within a good realm. Yet we're doing a great job educating the kids. So we're getting a lot of support. The boards of finance, I, I understand it reasonably well with Washington tonight. Um, and we've got two more boards of finance that have to be, that have to be approached and gone through, but I believe we'll have good support in the towns. For this budget. I just want to make sure that we're all on board with the budget, that we don't, we don't have an.
Are the first selectmen going to be at the meeting, at the budget meetings? Okay, yeah.
The only question that I had that I, that I really couldn't answer was somebody asked about the Spanish program in the elementary school. And where, and if there's any changes to that.
So there's no changes. In the Spanish program in this budget because it's already built in. So right now, if, I'm not sure if you're aware, but we have a retired teacher, Leslie Holt-Sruddy. Working with our elementary schools and part of the reason we brought her in. Was so that she could not only work with the kids, but she could develop the curriculum because we didn't have an elementary Spanish curriculum. So she's been working on that this year. And then the plan is to post and hire a full-time elementary Spanish teacher for this coming year. And that's in this budget.
Yeah, that, that, this is really important to have Leslie Holt-Sruddy doing this because as a high school. World language teacher, she knows the foundation, the curricular approach that needs to be, that you have the best. Results when they get to the middle high school. And I think that's, I think that's critical. This, we, we, we did this one correctly.
I, I just wanted to be able to get back to that person and tell them what the school was.
Got a quick question.
Yeah.
Um, came up today. I went to the PTO meeting. And I just could, there were five things we're going to do on the way of security. Armed guard, film on the windows, door entry.
What?
Bollards. What was the fifth one? I couldn't remember.
Sign, sign, sign. That was it.
Yeah.
Yeah, sign. That was it. I couldn't think of it to save my life. Turn a little over this way.
Well, the, the other thing I heard, there, there were some initial concerns about the, about the use of armed security guards. But the fact that they're, they're retired policemen, uh, I think is, is, is gone a long way. That plus the fact that, that the parents are very, 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 very much want this. And the children react very well to our resource officer and the other police officers, they've come into contact with, they, they feel like they're there to protect them. And for all of these reasons, the, the selectmen have. Come around and think, and think that it's probably a good idea, at least what they're expressing to me, but they had some reservations. Uh, they, they did. And I think that, I think a lot of people are saying, gee, armed people in the schools, that seems kind of extreme. It's not extreme. It's, it's, how do we, how do we ensure that we have someone on the ground in case? That, you know, the worst, the worst occurs. And I, I think that it's a, it's a good precaution.
They also didn't talk about, they also are not seeing the fact that they will. Bet the people coming in and walk around the, the perimeter and see, you know, what's going on and look at the cameras and. Checking doors and all that. So they're, they're not seeing that portion of, of the guards.
John?
I, I do have one other consideration, um. And I know some, some board members won't be so. Positive about it, but um. When you take a look at the budget, the raw number, you put in the amount of students we're going to be educating. And that, and that's with the brick and mortar. It's about thirty-four plus thousand per head. We have to take a look at tuition and I'm sorry, you know, the, the, at least it's a good face gesture to the taxpayers. That um, we're offsetting the budget by educating out of district students. And um, you know, I, I think it, I, I don't think it'd be asking too much to bring the tuition in, price up. I mean, they can't even go to any private school for, for anywhere near that, what they're paying to tuition in. So. You know, I think the board should take a, a serious look at it in, in good faith to the taxpayers.
Would the administration be able to make a presentation to us on the, this thing to return in? And whether you have any recommendations that can be made, members?
Yes, and I think we've had a conversation about this at a previous meeting and we agree that. About time to do that.
All right.
When we decided to move here almost four years ago. The one thing that drew us to this community is the fact that my child would be getting a private school education in a public school setting. And I think that that is a huge sell to people in other towns. And I teach at a private Catholic school on Wednesdays. And there were so many students that applied to the ag program because they want to be in this. Small setting and so many of them did not get it and were waitlisted and they, their hearts were broken. The families' hearts are broken. Because they so want to come here. So I think it's a good idea if we do take a look at that. And it's a huge selling point that we are so small and it's like a private school education.
I agree with John also, that this, we should look at this.
Good. I think we have a consensus on that.
I don't know if it needs to be in this year's budget though.
I don't think there's time.
I don't think there's time. I think what it would be is we would implement it sometime. Maybe implement it effective for next year, but the, when the money comes in would be, be a surplus in the budget, which. Would be then either returned to the towns or whatever it's done with it. But I, I agree with you, John. We need to look at that.
Yeah. Okay, good. Anything else on the budget this evening? All right. Well, if there's no objection, I will declare this budget workshop adjourned at um, six fifty PM.